Pursuant to the Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, the Public Law of 1975, this meeting was noticed and was sent to the Asbury Park Press on August 29th, 2022. Has been duly advertised in the Asbury Park Press issue on September 1st, 2022. All municipal clerks of the townships, the boroughs within the regional high school district has been notified and the requirements of the posting has been met on August 29th, 2022. Please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Mrs. Scott, any changes to the executive agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. In addition to the items that were noted on the agenda that was printed in advance of the meeting, the Board also, for exception number seven, discussed the settlement agreement for matter 2012-120-44. In addition, the Board also discussed pending student matters and contractual issues. Those are both under exception under seven. Those are the only additions.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the March 16th regular Board meeting?
Motion.
Mrs. Higley.
I hear Mrs. Higley. Was there a second?
Mrs. Lavin.
Mrs. Lavin, any discussion? Not hearing any discussion, roll call please.
Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiola?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Ms. McCaff?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes. Just a note, communications are on file in the Board Secretary's office. And now we're ready for Dr. Sampson's report.
Thank you, Mr. Bruno. So, a lot on tonight's agenda, but we are going to open up with two of our executive student cabinet members who are here with us this evening. We have Sam Rodriguez from Freehold High School, and Sam's going to do his bit and then introduce Peyton Libros from Freehold Township. And so, thank you both of you for coming out. And just a note, as we wrap up the year, the exec student cabinet has been a terrific group this year, and we're in the process of selecting next year's exec student cabinet. And as we move forward over the next six to seven weeks, they'll be transitioning that group to next year as they set sail for greener pastures than Freehold Regional High School District. But Samuel, I'll turn it over to you.
From 2000 to 2001, the oldest and most ethnically diverse school in the district had 941 students. But from 2012 to 2013, there were 1,581. To put it in perspective, that's an increase of over 60%. Why? Why the drastic increase? Well, I like to think it's because people started to understand the secret. In the steps of my fellow executive cabinet members, I am proud to say that tonight I have the great honor and pleasure to reveal that secret and talk about Freehold High School's multifaceted diversity. I would like to think that academically, each and every student is here for a different reason. First, we offer various magnet programs, the Computer Science Program, Medical Sciences, and the Culinary Arts and Hospitality Management. Each program is dedicated to emulating what the work environment would be like in order to help students have the knowledge and understanding of what their future in their respective fields would be like. Medical science students, in their junior year, complete an individual research project. Aspiring chefs in the culinary program work under professional chefs at the Five Star Cafe, where you can have a great lunch made by the students. And last but not least, you have my program, the Computer Science Program, which is based on project work. I've started from minor stuff, such as building programs to check if a number is odd or even, to working on machine learning projects, where now I'm working on building a machine learning project that can recognize sign language gestures based on what you enter in the camera, and that can convert it into text. The students not within these programs have ample opportunities to learn more through AP classes, extracurricular activities, and career pathways. With all these opportunities, it honestly might seem hard to get started, but don't worry, we always got your back. The Avid Program is dedicated to helping first-generation students explore any and all interests they may have, while understanding how to best prepare for college. And our great guidance counselors are ready and available to help students along the way and push them to better fulfill their potential. Freehold High School has something for everyone. What helps the most, though, are the relationships built among the students and the teachers. My lunch is spent with friends in comp sci, med sci, and some who aren't even in a program. Aren't we all doing different things? I can hear you ask. But despite the fact that we are all reaching different goals, we are walking towards them together. This then creates a fellowship, where students with similar paths are brought together based on their shared passions. And if there doesn't seem to be a space for your passion, I recommend connecting with our amazing teachers, who will work hard to make it efficiently recognized. Your imagination is the limit. These kind of relationships don't just happen. At Freehold High School, they are earnestly seeked out. A great example is peer-to-peer tutoring. What's actually so interesting about it, it's that it's very common for one student to be very skilled in geometry, well, not so much in history, and to tutor that student to tutor another in the exact opposite situation. There's then a give-give relationship based on combined academic support allowing for greater connection. Our friends aren't just friends at Freehold High School. We have a second family to call home and rely on, no matter who you are. From past students to current students, Freehold High School's diversity has fostered an environment of introspection, creativity, and curiosity, built on the pillars of unity, relationships, and knowledge. We are committed to excellence. I want to say thank you for all your time, and I would please look forward to what else Freehold High School has to offer. We're just getting started. And now, I have the great honor and pleasure to introduce the one and only Peyton Libros, who will speak on why Freehold Township High School is so special.
My name is Peyton Libros, and I am a member of the Superintendent's Executive Student Cabinet. I am proud to say that I come from Freehold Township High School. First, I would like to say thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you today, and for the position in this district that I currently am in. I am honored to be a part of something as great as this, serving our district as a student liaison between the student body and central administration. I would like to take this opportunity to share with you what makes Freehold Township High School and the Freehold Regional High School District unique. The other five members of the cabinet and I meet monthly to discuss and share our high school experience. In doing so, we aim to create change within our schools and district to provide students with the most incredible educational opportunities and experience possible. We pride ourselves on what we feel represents a strong value to the Freehold Regional High School District: knowledge, relationships, and unity. Together as a cabinet, we share, discuss, and generate ideas to help improve, strengthen, and grow the district to be greater than it already is. I will start off with my personal favorite at FTHS, and that is the faculty greetings. Each day, I look forward to walking into school or class and hearing "Good morning, how are you?" from the administrators, staff, and teachers. This simple, but powerful gesture creates a positive start to each student's day and helps to build stronger, happier teacher-student relationships, and it sets the tone for the day, a fun and positive learning experience. As many of you know, students learn best when they are HRE, or happy, relaxed, and engaged. The heartwarming and welcoming atmosphere in the school and classroom helps students focus and get the most of their lessons. As well as the welcoming and friendly atmosphere, the school also provides with an abundance of educational opportunities. Students are able to join countless clubs, and there truly is a place for everyone. From Unity Council to Chess Club, students are able to learn so much more above and beyond what we learn in the classroom. We learn how to build relationships with others, the meaning of commitment, and other various life skills. Freehold Township High School offers many elective classes geared toward students' interests, while simultaneously reinforcing skills needed past high school. In addition to the multitude of educational and extracurricular opportunities, the school provides volunteer opportunities that place students in a position where they can help others and make a change in others' lives. Freehold Township also has various academic programs. We are home to the International Baccalaureate Program of the District, which is a world-renowned program with only 7,800 programs off a worldwide, and we are one of them. We are also home to the Global Studies and Animal Botanical Science Programs. These programs allow students with an interest in the field to get prerequisite information before college, and to help set students up for success in their future endeavors. Although I personally am not in one of these programs, I have worked with my guidance counselor to build a rigorous schedule for myself by taking advantage of more of the 15 AP classes offered at FTHS. All in all, being a patriot of Freehold Township High School means being a part of an inclusive, unique, and positive learning environment. It is obvious that this district wants to see its students succeed. If there's one word that I have repeated in this speech, it is opportunity. And that is exactly what the FRHSD provides to its students, and I'm delighted to say that I am a member of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Samuel. Thank you, Peyton. Appreciate both of you coming out this evening. You do not have to sit through the budget presentation. And so, switching gears, but I think every meeting's a little bit better when we open with students, and next month is one of our student recognition Board meetings as well, and we'll have, hopefully, several hundred students receiving medals that night. So, those are always the highlight of what we do. Because tonight, what we have in front of us is the public hearing on the school budget. And that is not always the, certainly, cheery endeavor this year in particular. And so, I'm not, if you've watched any of the Board meetings for the past five years, if you've looked at our webpage about our work in advocating for students, if you've seen any of the videos that I've sent home to our community of 200,000, if you've read any of the letters I've written to our legislative leaders, and if you've read any of the testimony that I've put forth before the Senate Budget Committee, the Assembly Budget Committee, as well as the Joint Committee, you know exactly where we've been as it relates to school funding and Senate Bill 2, and the position that that legislative change in school funding has put the Freehold Regional High School District in. And so, it's difficult, because when you alert the community that difficult decisions are coming, and that reduction in programs and less opportunity, I mean, you just heard two of the exec student cabinet members talk about the opportunities in this district. And so, the work we've done in having our budget, you know, we've had our aid slash now approximately $25 million. And so, that's $25 million on approximately $190 million budget, for reference. What has guided us in our decision-making to manage that drawdown is to preserve the academic programs and the opportunities for the students that you just heard from. And so, that's what guides us in our decision-making, and that's what's guiding us in the budget that Mr. Boyce is going to present this evening. But there are a couple of things to keep in mind and to remember. And, you know, first and foremost, without legislative change to the school funding formula, what we're going through tonight is still only the tip of the iceberg in terms of what's going to happen to this school district. And I've said repeatedly that some communities, as a result of S2, are really going to face the evisceration of their public schools. And we are one of those communities. So, right now, the adequacy line that the state draws in terms of what you're supposed to spend, right? So, the courts have said that the state is required to provide a thorough and efficient education for all students. And as a result of determining what that thorough and efficient education is, the state draws an adequacy line of what you're supposed to fund your schools. The Freehold Regional High School District with this budget will be $20 million below the state's own line of what is determined thorough and efficient for our children. Now, we were fortunate. Couple things happened over the past couple years, and I've said this repeatedly. COVID masked a lot of our financial difficulties. We would have been here last year if we hadn't received the federal dollars that we received from the pandemic. And what happened with those dollars to the tune of about $9 million, they masked some of the budget holes in the reduction that we had. And so, that allowed us also to manage some of this for a little bit longer. And, you know, we've continued to kick the can down the road as long as we could, in the hopes that something would happen with the school funding itself. I've said it time and time again, we've been engaged in a multi-year lawsuit with the Department of Education. We've prevailed, but we still can't make hide nor hair of the formula itself. As a matter of fact, the figures that they turned over to us actually disappear once you enter them into the software. Just think about that. If I stood up here tonight and said, "Our budget's $194 million this year, but when you go home to see what we're spending it on, and when you enter it into that category, it disappears," I don't think I'd be sitting in this seat very long. That's what we're up against with the Department of Ed. We're at the point of making some very difficult decisions. I want to highlight a couple things long-term that frame what's happening tonight. At the conclusion of this budget, we will have eliminated 132 positions since I've been here. We will have eliminated over 15% of our administrative staff. Our per pupil expenditure is almost $5,000 now, less than comparable school districts per pupil. Our administrative costs are 24% less than the state average. Our class sizes of 31-plus have increased from approximately 150 classes across the district in 2018 to somewhere north of 450 of those classes this year. That's the context of where we make very difficult decisions, and the Board is going to have to make some difficult decisions. And we're going to manage that as much as we can, but there's only certain buckets that that comes from. Comes from staff, it comes from additional fees and sources of revenue, and it comes from reducing things that we are not compelled by law to do. And that will bring us to the conversation this evening. The budget that's being presented tonight includes another 19.4 positions being eliminated this year, bringing us to that 132 total since I've been here, but 50, over 50 in the past three years alone. So, with that context, Mr. Boyce, I'll turn it over to you, and you can go through the budget itself.
Thanks, Dr. Sampson. And, you know, from the comments that Superintendent just made, you know, the core issue with Freehold Regional's budget, and there are other districts in a similar position, is the legislative environment about how to fund school districts, right? And then, from that, the impact is pervasive in many other areas of the school district. And it's important, it's always been important for us, that the community is fully aware. The more the community knows, the better off the district is. And in this particular case, with legislative interpretations of the original intent of the budget law and how schools should be funded, Freehold Regional's landed on the wrong side of that. So, here are some of the core areas that I want to talk about here tonight. It's a $200 million-plus annual operation, and it's revenue-driven operation, right? So, that's what drives, the decisions are made on the appropriation side. In terms of revenue, there are essentially only two players, state and local. And that's really where the core of the issue is about who is going to be responsible for which piece of that. The adequacy budget, as was just explained, is the state's calculation of how much it should cost for a district to provide a thorough and efficient education. So, we'll talk about how they come about that number, but I'll tell you that it is specific to each district, right? Because no two districts have the same enrollment, have the same student demographic. So, from that, you know, we'll see where, how this S2 and the funding formula, also known as, how that influences and permeates all areas of our operation. The decisions that we've made along the way, in the five years that S2 has been in place, out of a seven-year phase-in, where the state money is shifting from school districts that are perceived to have the ability to pay for their own education, to school districts that do not have the same ability to pay for their own education. So, those are the things we're looking at. As Superintendent mentioned, the elimination of courtesy busing is something that is, of course, a very difficult decision. It's going to be very disruptive to a significant portion of our families to transition to the elimination of courtesy busing, but also the staff. And that's a compounding effect, and many of the things we'll see here tonight. It's also a compounding effect of the changes made under Senate Bill Number 2 or S2. And also, the capital funding perspective, how we've gone about that in the past, and how that looks now, and how we see it looking in the future. So, just a quick overview on the revenue slide. And as you can see, it's, all in all, a $2 million-plus operation per year. But the organization structurally, it's broken down into funds, right? But far and away, the most significant fund is the general fund. That's where everything that you're going to normally think of a school district doing, that's where that's housed. There's also special revenue fund and a debt service fund. So, let me start at the bottom there. The community passed a referendum in November of '21. The year that we're in, FY, which is fiscal year FY23, was the first year of payment on that 20-year bond, right? And that was intended to address top-tier priority roofing and paving projects, right? So, the most imminent projects. The things that were three to five years out didn't make it in to that referendum. It was only the things that need to be done now, or should have been done a year or two ago, right? So, the most imminent projects. And that's what the debt service looks like. Special revenue fund are state and federal funds that are earmarked for a specific purpose. Now, this is also a significant influence on the condition of our general fund, and let me explain why. The federal government put out three rounds of funding for schools, municipalities, and other organizations, but for schools to recover from the COVID, from the pandemic, right? And the early part of that was a reopening plan, right? So, to get your facilities straight, keep things safe, and then that also moved on to, over the three, learning loss and addressing that, as well as mental health issues, and some of the behaviors that as kids come back from COVID to get them readjusted to life in school. So, that money has run its course, and the remains of it are included in the FY24 budget. But it was, and it was spent on COVID-specific situations, right? It wasn't used to fund ongoing operations. The issue is that, as the money diminishes, the needs have not. So, a lot of those needs, particularly in the area of mental health, they remain, they persist, right? And so, the impact of that is the responsibility for funding them moves from the special revenue fund into the general fund, and puts further pressure on the demand for the limited resources that we have. So, as I said earlier, the two main players in a school budget are state and local, as far as funding. Let me just hit some of the highlights here. By local, that's property taxes primarily, as you can see, it's the largest number on the screen. But it's also fund balance that's appropriated, that's a local contribution, and some other smaller-scale stuff. But so, property taxes are the main local piece of that. The state aid piece of that, you can see here that we've lost another $6.7 million under this seven-year phase-out of funding. That was, this is year six of year seven, so we projected there's another $2 million to go beyond that. But what happened when the cuts were so significant this year, and they came out in March, is that the legislature regrouped, and Senator Gopau sponsored some legislation to award what they called supplemental stabilization aid. Importantly, this was not a restoration of aid, of reduced aid under S2. This was not a restoration of the $6.7 million cut. This was a one-year-only. So, what that serves to do is simply defer the cut for another year, because it's very clear in the legislation that this is a one-time appropriation of money. So, while that did soften the landing for this year, it's not a fix, it's just a one-year deferral rather than a restoration of funds. And, you know, other areas of the budget, and I'll talk to us here, one of the responses to the impact of S2 over the five years now, six years that it's been in play is, the strategies that we use to develop our budget have changed, right? Our tolerance for risk needed to go up, right? And what that means is that built into any annual operating budget is funding to handle the unforeseen, or some would call it contingency, I call it the inevitable, because it's going to happen, we just don't know what it is yet, not until it happens. That has been compressed, right? So, the ability to be nimble and address things, we've increased our risk for that. The other impact of that is that less is remaining at the end of any given year, which means, and what remains lapses into fund balance, which is then used to support a future year, a subsequent year. So, as budgets get tighter, less lapses, and then less fund balance is available for subsequent budgets. So, we've been very aggressively drawing down our surplus in order to backfill the gaps of the cuts in state aid over the first five years, knowing full well that that would also run its course, okay? So, those are some of the other impacts. And finally, one other impact has to do with capital planning. So, this district has a really strong history of providing for big-ticket facility improvements, or if you need to replace a roof, it's not necessarily an improvement, but it's the critical maintenance of the facilities. We've been managing those things within the confines of an annual budget. We've been able to do that. Something that we've not been able to do since the inception of S2, which means that if you're not able to manage those within those confines of an annual budget, your only other option is a referendum, right? And we had a referendum, and as I told you, it was just for the most severe conditions to address those. But we're in a position where we need to rethink our capital funding strategy, because our ability, as I said, to handle that within operating budgets and fund what are called facility reserves, which are, think of set-aside funds dedicated to big-ticket facility-type things, we haven't been able to put money into that, and we haven't been able to manage it within our budget. So, these are some of the domino effects of S2, is that other choices are being made over these years, knowing that they will run their course, and we're going to reach a point where those are no longer viable options of any significance. So, you can see what the design of it this year looks like, and further on in the presentation, we'll talk about what it looks, what the trajectory looks like in the future here. But so, let's get to sort of the core of the issue. And I only want to talk about this in a very conceptual way, because it's a pretty straightforward approach to how the state designed what's called the School Funding Reform Act, was put in place back in fiscal year '09. And how they approached it was quite simply a two-step process, the first being, how much should it cost? And the second step being, how are we going to pay for it, right? So, I think it's a sound approach, makes sense. So, what they designed, they designed and they periodically update a cost model. That cost model is uniform, applied to all districts, that approximates the costs of students of different characteristics, right? And then, each district's actual enrollment profile, their student demographics, are pushed through that cost model. through that cost model to arrive at what's called the adequacy budget, as in, an adequate amount of money to provide a thorough and efficient education. So, pretty straightforward, very specific to each district, to identify at least, here's the target amount that the school district's going to need. Now, in order to pay for it, the state's approach is, community first, through what's called your local fair share. And then to the extent the local fair share is not able to meet adequacy, the state aid picks up the difference to arrive at adequacy, so that, in theory, all districts will have an adequate amount of money to provide a thorough and efficient education. Their constitutional obligation is to provide all students a thorough and efficient education, so they needed to design a way to get there. There are certain aspects of this that have, I believe, lost fidelity with the spirit and the design of the SFRA, and that's really where the core problem lies. So the local fair share, so let's think about this, to quantify a community's ability to pay for its own education. So there's no straightforward, direct way to do that, but they did come up with a methodology, and it looks like this. They take the communities, two wealth indicators from the communities. One is the current market value of the property, right? And the other is district income from the most recent state tax return filings. So that's their two data points on measuring the community's wealth and their ability to pay. They then convert those two numbers into what you can afford in property taxes. So, and then, according to the five circles there, to the extent that that local fair share doesn't meet adequacy, the state backfills the rest, or compensates the rest in order to reach adequacy. So here's what it looks like. Green lines are what actually happened, red lines are what the funding formula calculated to happen. Now, the funding formula, which has been in place since 2009, has never entirely been adhered to. It was either underfunded, ignored altogether, and there was a stretch of years where every district got the same amount that they got the year before. And the third component of the complication of that is that there is a separate, independent law that governs the amount you can increase a property tax levy. So, but back to, let's look at the green line, or the green lines on the state aid side. So you can see the stretch of years there where it's just same as last year. But you can see it's fallen significantly, and that's since the inception of S2, which sought to bring things back into alignment. Our local fair share on this side is, as you can see, it's volatile as it moves around. I'll give you some stats that hopefully, you know, put that into context with you, for you. Our local fair share has increased 86% during the course of this new funding formula. Yet our property values have only increased 37%, and our income has only increased 63%. So the trick here is that these multipliers that convert those numbers into ability to pay, they're all over the place. They're never the same from one year to the next. There's no justification as to where they came from. The lawsuit Dr. Sampson referred to was, where do those multipliers come from that convert our two wealth indicators into our ability to pay? According to the SFRA, according to the state, we should be taxing at $184 million. Our current tax levy is $152 million. So they think that property taxes should be increased by 20% for the taxpayers of Freehold Regional in order to, you know, the community to pay its fair share for funding adequacy. And then they use that number to back into, then how much state aid should you get in order to, together with your local fair share, reach it? The problem is, districts like ours can't access their local fair share. I can't go from 150 to 184. Not that I would want to, but there's a separate, independent law capping increases on tax levy by 2%. So this is why we end up with, with local and state together being $20 million below adequacy, right? So I, you know, it is, it is mind-boggling to me that the state would allow school districts to continue to operate with, by their own measure and calculation, $20 million less than they need to provide a thorough and efficient education. But this is all part of the shift of dollars moving away from certain districts and to other districts based on this measure of need, which we questions, and have questioned since day one. If the multipliers had stayed the same from the first year to the current year, the red line at 184 would be $149,500. So that's how much influence those, just those changes of the multipliers have on the measure of a community's ability to pay for its own education. And the resulting shortfall, being below adequacy, is where we're pressed to make changes based on the amount of revenue available. And as I mentioned earlier, we've done that through a variety of ways of managing our budgets that have served its purpose along the way, but they're not long-term solutions. Just some other slides for context, you know, going back, there was a time that the funding formula said that we were entitled to $51 million of state aid, equalization aid specifically. So the far side of the previous graph, and that's now down to 2.7 million, right? So it's a 95% loss of eligibility for state aid, which is a shift then to the local fair This is the aid as calculated. The next slide, so it's been, it's an interesting thing to track of, okay, so who funds adequacy, right? How are we going to pay for it? Local and state. So if we drop back to 2013, the community was responsible for 68% of that, and the state for 31% of that. That has moved to almost exclusively the local community's responsibility to fund adequacy, where we only have, you know, 1.5% remaining. That's a 95% reduction in our eligibility for state funding. So, so in the end, so in the end, and just to finish up of how the state funding formula works, the calculation of ability to pay, or the, what, how much should it cost, is pretty pure, right? Because the student demographics is going to be spot-on. The cost model is not completely up-to-date, we feel, on what the actual costs to run schools are, but at least it's universally applied and affects everybody equally. The real crux of the problem is the local fair share and the conversion of those two wealth indicators into ability to pay. Keep in mind, the higher, from the state's perspective, the higher they can push the local fair share, the lower the state's obligation is to backfill in order to reach adequacy. So the state has its own budget constraints, and there's, it's been speculated by us and other districts in our position that they probably, they may start with what they have available, and then back into the local fair share by adjusting those multipliers. That's the answer we're trying to get legis, legally, through legal means, and over a course of years, they have not given up that information. But regardless, that's the, that is the position that we're currently in. So, we, the appropriations, so the, how is that money spent? And, you know, in, in my mind, there's really only two categories: direct instruction and everything else, right? Because the core purpose of this organization is academic, it's educational, right? So the blue portions of this chart are all, whether it's gen ed, special ed, or athletics and activities, which is considered in the instructional bucket, 60% of our funds go towards that. The remaining categories are to create the best conditions for that direct instruction to happen, right? Whether that be student supports, and that's guidance counselors, the school nurse, things like that, or it's also the curriculum support, like our R&amp;D department that prepares curriculum and provides professional development teachers, all to create the ideal condition in the classroom for direct instruction. The other areas, facilities, transportation, administration, and capital are other, you need the facility to be in shape, transportation to be in place, and capital maintain your facility and equipment. So, you know, and Chuck had mentioned earlier about where we stand on spending, and, you know, this is, there's a downside to Freehold Regional fairing as well as it does in this spending metric. So what this is, is it's the Taxpayer's Guide to Education Spending. And that's, the estate takes independently audited information, spending information, processes that and presents it in a comparable form. So, you know, there are different categories, as you can see, so that it's apples-to-apples comparisons. You want to, you want to see where you stand compared to your sibling districts, right? They're going to be the best point of reference for you. And it's also important to note that, you know, high school kids cost more than middle school kids, that costs more than elementary school kids. And that's, that's part of that cost model that determines how much should make, and that should make sense to all of us. So the last two columns, the next-to-last column, the $19,078, is all of the high school-only school districts, which are all regional school districts. There are 31 in the state which we are part of. The average of that group is $19 million. Freehold Regional is at $14 million.
$19,000.
I'm sorry?
$19,000.
$19,000, I'm sorry, what did I say?
Million.
Million, $19,000.
You just spent us a lot of millions.
But now, there's some economy of scale there, because of those 31 districts, we're the largest of those districts, right? There are some, we have over 10,000 kids. There are some in the 6,000s, 3,000s, but others are small. So it's going to be harder for them to achieve that. But, you know, when it comes back to the funding formula and funding schools, when you, when you look at Freehold Regional, with the opportunities that are available for our students, which we heard from two of our student reps today talk about, that range of opportunities at this price point, this should be the model that the state is after. And through numerous meetings with legislators that we've had along the way, they don't disagree with that, but in the grander scheme of things, they need to bring the formula into balance, right? Where it had been just ignored for several years, and they had to bring it back to what they believe is the design intent. We, again, continue to challenge their measure of the local fair share and our ability to pay. The downside of being at this kind of price point is it's, there's not as many places to go when reductions, when revenues are reduced, right? So we're running a pretty lean organization and providing, you know, many student opportunities, but we're doing that in a very efficient way as the taxpayer guide indicates. So, and Chuck had mentioned it before, our cost per pupil is 25% lower, our administrative cost is also 25% lower than the other 31, the average of the other 31. So both of those areas are running fairly lean. So in addition to an additional 20 staff members, and cuts to other, the entire district, whether it's the school principals who saw 10% cuts in the amount of allocation that they have to work with, and all department heads, there's pain that, that's throughout the organization. But the most noteworthy is the elimination of courtesy busing. So the state mandates busing for any students that live over two and a half miles. Freehold Regional has transported 100% of its students, which are all high school students, which is a bit of an anomaly. There are not many districts remaining that provide 100% busing to their student population, particularly their high school students. So our, within this budget is built that, to move to that state-mandated 2.5 miles. That's going to affect approximately a third of our students. That will reduce the number of runs approximately 25%, bus routes, that is, and it will save $3.5 million. So it's a, it's a big-ticket item in order to bring our, our budget into balance. There will be, the line's going to be a hard line, hazardous conditions, safety concerns from home to your school of attendance, which that's the measure, and it's on public roadways or walkways. So it is, if you were to walk there, 2.5 miles, it's not as the pro flies. There's, there's, there's no consideration given with regard to eligibility for transportation. Students will either be eligible for transportation or not eligible for transportation. And, you know, the best thing that we can do is to give ample notice to the community, which began in our February meeting, and we've talked about it in the years leading up to, leading up to the budget being presented tonight. We had consultants who do this for a living run through those numbers for us. They presented to the board the status of, of their work in February. Tonight, it's being adopted as part of this budget, and there will be communications out to the members, the affected members of our community over the course of the next four months. And so hopefully, parents have enough time to decide what's right for their family and make arrangements accordingly. So some of the impact, other impact of that is, what's it going to look like around the schools, traffic-wise? And our principals, we've reached out with, to all of our communities and the township administrators, the principals are working with police chiefs to manage that, although there'll be fewer buses there, there'll be a lot more cars coming in. So that's going to take, I'm sure there'll be a period of time where that gets sorted out to, you know, get the right traffic flow, and it'll be different in each school. The one-third of students is district-wide. The breakdown of that per high school varies, right? So you have Freehold Borough, which is the most heavily impacted, and on the other end, Colts Neck and Howe are the least impacted. And it's all just simply a matter of geography and where students live in relation to the school that they attend. The other communities, the other four schools are, or the other three schools are in the 30% to 40% range of impacted, so about a third for those other schools. So, you know, in the majority of our communities, there's significant impact on this, and, you know, overall, a third of our families being impacted, which is more than 3,000 families, that's certainly a significant number. And the dollar savings is also a significant number.
Thank you.
So, so where do we land property tax-wise with all of this? So what I have here is, what I'm working with the Monmouth County tax assessor to really try and measure what the tax impact is going to be from our increase in property taxes. This is, this is how it shakes out, but I need to qualify this. Monmouth County is a pilot county in a program that annually converts the assessed values of all properties into their current market value, right? So that means rateable leases go up, and the byproduct of that is tax rates go down. The message here is, the most important thing is your individual property and how it leads to the activity in your municipality. So while this looks like really good news, it really is specific. So while this looks like really good news, it really is specific to what your, your town's situation is. So we'd encourage you to check in with them, and that'll be the, the true measure of what your property tax impact will be. So finally, from here forward, you know, a lot of those strategies that we've used to, to balance the budget along the way, they are running their course, and that impact is gonna be felt, but still, the primary objective here is to continue to press legislators to address an obvious flaw in the funding formula. Some of the recommendations that we've made along the way is to, right out of the gate, ensure that no district is below adequacy, right? And that the state's meeting its constitutional obligation to provide a thorough and efficient education, to provide enough money as identified by adequacy. We think there's opportunities to correct situations which disproportionately impact districts like ours. For example, our vocational students, they are not counted as our students, so there is no aid attached to our vocational students. Tuition plus transportation for our vocational students is eight point two million dollars in this upcoming year, with no corresponding consideration in state aid. That's something, and being a high school only district, one hundred percent of our students are eligible to attend a vocational school, where obviously a K-12 district, it's a far less percentage of their total student population. We think that makes sense. To stabilize the wealth multipliers for a more predictable and equitable measure of local fair share, we received that information in March. Prior to receiving that information, we have absolutely no idea what our state aid is going to be. And we cannot with any degree of confidence predict what it would be. We can only simply use the multipliers that were in place the previous year, and if they were the same, which they haven't been, then this is what it would look like. But at this point, we've been diminished to so little state aid that there's not much left to take from us. So stabilize the wealth multipliers and make them a more realistic measure of a community's ability to pay for its own education. Consider, funding considerations for districts unable to access their local fair share, this is that hundred and fifty-two million levy to a hundred and eighty-four million dollar levy. We can't get there with a two percent cap on an increase in the levy. It would take us a decade to get from where we are to where we need to be, even at this point in time. So that's obviously what's driving us being under adequacy and being in the financial situation that we are. And also meaningful incentives for regional school districts. And we think, we know that we make a strong case for regional districts being effective in both terms of price, but also in student opportunities. I mean, there are twelve magnet programs, two IB schools, full range of athletics and activities. There's something for every student here going to our comprehensive high schools. And, you know, we, we think it should serve as a model, we think a financial incentive should be awarded for districts that spend under, spend, meet certain spending criterias, and that may encourage other communities to also consider regionalization for both financial reasons and for student opportunity reasons. So the, over the years here, those are the points that we keep hammering home, ideas that they can potentially use to help correct the course. But that advocacy remains the most critical work that we have ahead of us. Optimizing our capital funding opportunities through state grants, which on tonight's agenda, there's approval to submit for a state grant, and the, the state grants, the, the pockets of money become available at the state periodically that will fund forty percent of capital projects for districts. It's a limited pot of money, and so getting something done at a forty percent, forty percent discount makes all the sense in the world. The problem with it is that we need to come up with the other sixty percent, right? So that's additional pressure on our budget of where we're able to pull to our side of that match in order to make those projects happen. We have one point one million dollars worth of projects submitted in this round of facility funding from the state, and we'll, we'll know shortly whether or not, to what degree we have awards associated with those projects, which are all HVAC related. So it's all our heating and ventilation, mechanical equipments, things. So that's, that's the work ahead of us. I also noted up there, just to give a sense of scale, based on the information we know now, we're projecting a ten million dollar deficit for fiscal year twenty-five. That's a significant deficit that we're gonna have to make up through a combination of, of things, including different strategies on funding capital, but also cuts, cuts to those areas that are outside of our core mission here, which is educational academics. But eventually, over time, in this trajectory, that's gonna start to hit those areas as well, and that's gonna significantly change what this district looks like. So Board, I'll, I'll open it up to questions, and I know, I know Board received a more thorough report a couple of weeks ago, and it's something that's been a subject of conversation for, for several years now on the Board. But I'll open up to the Board for any specific questions at this time. Kathy?
A question. As far as the county schools are concerned, you said eight point two million vocational schools, that's going to the Monmouth County schools, correct?
Well, it's tuition and transportation.
And transportation, right. How are those schools compensated? Like, do the counties put money into those?
County does put money in.
Is it only by the kids?
No, they, they also receive state aid because the kids are associated with the vocational district, not with us. So it's as if they don't exist. In other words, let me say, if every kid in Freehold Regional went to a vocational school.
Yeah.
Our adequacy budget would be zero. Because under the state, the way the state views it, we would have zero kids. Yet we would have tuition and transportation associated with all of those students, right?
But the tuition's higher than ours?
No.
To go to those schools?
No.
Individual students.
It's seeing increases each year with impact inflation and, and costs and staffing across the Board. But they, they have a different funding mechanism, the county, tuition, state aid, and that's the group of that is what they use to run their schools.
So we give them what we, what our students.
In their budget, they don't have a transportation one.
Okay.
That's all on us.
Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
So when we speak about transportation, this is a very difficult vote tonight, of course. We've been discussing this for months. I would go to finance meetings, I'm not even on the committee, just to look, maybe we'll find something else to do instead of cutting courtesy busing. But we're looking at transportation now, and we're really gonna be cleaning it up, like we're gonna be changing routes and making it more cost-effective. Cause like, eleven percent of our budget is really transportation, isn't it close to eleven percent of our budget, ten percent of our budget?
Yeah, I mean, on the handout here, it's twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two million dollars, even with that reduction. But you make a good point, Mr. Bruno, in that the students that live beyond two and a half miles and will still have transportation, there, there are, there are changes going on there as well, right? So we are, you know, redesigning, pulling more kids together on bus stops for efficiency purposes. So whereas in the past, we may have dropped into a neighborhood and stopped at several corners, more of those, more of those stops are gonna be consolidated, and that does create some efficiencies, and there's a, a layer of savings on that as well, but the lion's share of that savings is courtesy busing.
Everyone's gonna be feeling something.
Everybody's going to feel it in one way or the other.
I have a question. Why not cost, cut administration costs?
It's the, it's the public outcry, right? Those administrators. Look, the, so over the, the lifespan of, of our reductions, the actual highest percentage cut that we've made is to administration. So that has been where we've, we've carved out the largest percentage, and that's why we are twenty-five percent below the, the state average. And, you know, this budget, in those nineteen point four positions, there's two additional administrative positions that are also being cut in, in, in this proposed budget. So we've drawn down our administration extensively. It is the largest percentage cut we've made over the past several years.
It just seems to me like every year we seem to lose an administrator, at least at the building level. Am I wrong?
No, I mean, we've lost, we've lost a number across the district over the years. They've been reduced.
This is why that fourteen thousand dollars, I almost said fourteen million, the fourteen thousand dollars per pupil is low.
It's very low. It's, it's lower than the average of any configuration.
But that's one of the reasons why, because our administrative costs are low.
When we have all high school students.
Right.
Which would mean we should be the highest of any configuration. So, yeah, and, and the high schools, listen, I, I mean, I think if you look at our administrative cost per pupil being twenty-five percent lower than our sibling districts, I, I think that tells a, a clear story about where we stand.
You know, the, the interesting factor in, in, in the SFRA itself, right, is that you have a school funding model that has, gives no consideration to how much you spend, right?
Correct.
There is zero consideration to how financially efficient you are within the model itself, right? And so one of the things that, you know, we've noted repeatedly is that in, in some cases, you're watching districts across the state that are well above adequacy receive millions of dollars in additional aid this year. So two districts alone received over fifty-one million dollars in additional aid this year. And the only reason I'm highlighting that is because both of those particular districts are over adequacy, and that fifty million dollars would have kept the rest of the state whole. That's that other fifty million dollars.
Their cost per pupil.
Their cost per pupil in some cases are almost literally double ours, Mr. Bruno. So that, that, this is, you know, the high, as a high school district, we're the lowest spending district in Monmouth County now, of those fifty-some-odd districts. We are the lowest spending. That's, while, while efficiency is a point of pride, that is dangerous at a certain point in time in terms of where, where your funding lies. And again, there were, there were a number of simple asks that we had of our legislators at the start of this. We, we, this, this is not a surprise. When S two came down, Mr. Boyce and I sat with the legislative leadership in, in this area in the state, and we said, this is what's gonna happen if you pull this model out over seven years. This is how destructive it's gonna be. We asked for simple guardrails. A simple guardrail would have been, no district can be reduced more than what they can generate on their tax levy, right? Think about that, that makes sense. So you're gonna cut a school district, you reduce them by the amount that they can then generate in their tax levy, you do it over a period of time where districts can more effectively manage it. That was a simple ask six years ago. That was something that could have been done legislatively easy, easily. It was not. We've talked over and over again about the insaneness of the county vocational system in Monmouth County and how that disproportionately impacts our school system. And I've said it over and over again, I'll be very clear, we support those opportunities for kids, those are wonderful schools for those kids to be able to attend. However, the way that they are funded disproportionately impacts our district. First and foremost, a much higher percentage of our students lands on the shores of those schools. So when you look at Biotech High School in Monmouth County, fifty percent of those students originated from Freehold Regional. So we, those, our students are accepted at a higher rate than basically every other district in Monmouth with the exception of Home Dell. And I believe Home Dell has maybe a hundred and fifteen students in the county vocational system. We have six hundred. We pay for transportation for all six hundred. The total cost, we pay for tuition for all six hundred. And that money doesn't even get factored into our equalization aid. So just, just think about that. Now, I say this over and over to the, to the powers that be, and every time I say it, they're surprised to hear it, no matter how many times I say it, year over, year over year. So my only hope is that if anything, if nothing gets done before the election in November, if nothing changes on this circumstance, we, we will be, this, we'll look back on this budget as easy. That's where we're headed next year if nothing changes. There's not, there's no fool sitting in this room. It's an election year. The time for something to happen is this year, for some, some level of sanity in terms of, that the state has to understand that you, you, you can't lift up some districts and actively destroy others with your school funding formula. I do believe, and I've said this repeatedly, we may be the only state that has reduced districts the way we've reduced them during the pandemic. I, I don't wanna see the governor out there talking about mental health needs and all that with what that formula has done to districts like us. It's incredibly disingenuous. Because while other districts are adding counselors and adding support staff and adding staff and giving money back, by the way, in tax relief rather than utilize it for, for students, you know, we're, we're struggling to keep the lights on here. So, and nobody thinks about the long-term implications of this. The long-term implication of S two is that it has reduced the overall spend on public education in the state. So as some of these other districts receive additional funds and say, well, we'll give that back as tax relief rather than spend it on our children, my first question is, did you really need it then?
Right.
Right? If it went right back? My second question is, that was another simple ask that we said to the state. We said, if you're gonna, if you're gonna just give money to other districts, right? And, and many of these districts were underfunded for years, they were in the same situation we're in now prior to this. So they deserve the funding they got as well, I wanna be clear on that. However, the ones who were giving it back as tax relief were actually taking dollars that were intended for the K-12 public ed system in the state and reducing that total pot of what we're doing in the state for the children that we serve. That's the legacy of, of the past few years. That will be the long-term legacy. And, and the things that happened in this district, Sean and I, Mr. Boyce and I were talking about this the other day. It's, it, it will be very difficult now. It will be an adjustment, it will be five to seven years from now where folks will really be feeling it. It will be a decade when, when our infrastructure is really just beyond repair, and the communities will have to grapple with it at that point in time. And that is going to happen if something doesn't change. There's no, everybody's talking now, oh, I'll give you the perfect example, when I testified at the Senate Budget Hearing, the Senate Budget Chair said, we understand we need to tweak it. And I said, and, and I said, but, you know, with all due respect, that's what everybody says every year, nothing happens, right? So what are the tweaks? And then when we said, the Senate Budget Chair said, it's obvious that the funding formula is working. And I said, sir, with, with all due respect, if it was working, we wouldn't have spent five years involved in a lawsuit trying to figure out how it's even calculated. So the, the, this is where we are legislatively in, in, in the state. It is, it's disheartening that some of the districts like ours are, are in the situation that, that we've, we've arrived at. And that is what is forcing a number of these very, very difficult decisions that don't just, they are not gonna just strain our school system, they are gonna strain our municipalities and our communities at large greatly. They are going to strain our municipalities and our communities at large greatly. That's what's happening.
I'd like to just, basically, I think what's happening is we're a victim of our own efficiency, because you've been maintaining or, and running at such a low cost that we have nothing to take from. None of us wanted, on this board, want to take away busing from any student. But if it's that versus the classroom instruction, which is already over 450 classes, over 30, we're left with this because we are so efficient. So, and I just hope people realize that this is the state formula, and that they reach after legislatures, and that they, you know, do something before November, so hopefully we won't be in this situation next year.
So a couple comments on that. You know, the, the decisions that we've made in this budget, and the decisions that we'll be making in the future, they're not yes or no decisions. It's this or that. And, and none of the options are good options. And if you reach out to legislators, and if you talk to your legislators, I think the point to drive home is that it is indefensible for them to have any school district below adequacy. When the state itself quantifies a thorough and efficient education, and then does not provide means to, to have the resources to meet that number, then they are by definition not providing a thorough and efficient education. So it's an indefensible position that they're in for any of the districts that are below adequacy. But yes, Ms. Higley, you're right. It's, it's difficult decisions now, and more to come.
It's only going to affect the taxpayers. Our taxes will be going up higher to compensate.
Not under the current situation, because there's 2% cap.
You can't do the 2%.
So.
They're going above the 2%.
Yes, which, you know, in, in this year, we did take an opportunity to go above the 2% for a, a tax levy cap adjustment. And what's behind that is that we're in our second year of moving to a fully self-funded health insurance platform. And so a typical arrangement for, for districts is that you pay a premium for the, the people that you do have working there to the insurance company, that effectively transfers all of the risk to them. If claims are really high, that's, that's on the insurance company. It's not on the district. At least not that year, because those claims drive your subsequent year's premiums, right? So they catch up with you. But if it's, if it's a really good year, then the insurance company makes out, right? And you don't see a corresponding reduction in premiums in the subsequent year. So we, we have the scale to be able to consider and, and make that decision to move to a fully self-funded. So we'll keep the risk, right? So good years will benefit from. But part of that, that scenario, in order to mitigate risk in, in a number of areas here, is to set up reserves, right? So there's reserves for, for incurred but not recorded, reported claims, and for, there's a corridor, some insurance language that for self-funded platforms, there's additional reserves necessary, because we're assuming additional risk. And because health insurance premiums have risen so much, we were able to access that and increase our tax levy this year above the 2%. But for the last five years, we've been at 2%.
You can only do that once?
Yeah, so it's, it's that particular health benefit adjustment is, it's, the availability of it is based on the increases in the state health benefits plan, which we are not in. But that, they have a 15% increase this year, so that unlocks that opportunity for us to fund our reserves, which is normally done over a three to five-year period when you're transitioning into self-funded.
Just a little bit more context, Mr. Boyce, as well. So I do think it's important, you know, some of the board members had said earlier tonight that there was, there was a rumor that there might be more money. The, the final state budget is not struck until June. So there, there is time. There's time for the community to certainly lobby the governor, who we know, we have one of the largest surpluses that we've ever had, and for a fraction, for, for a literal cup of coffee on that surplus, no district in this state needs to be cut this year. I think that's an important, that's an important reality.
By we, you mean the state.
Correct. Yeah, we don't have that surplus. I mean, the state of New Jersey. Yes, thank you, Mr. Boyce. The state of New Jersey has unprecedented surplus at this point in time. We have all, we've all seen the increase in student needs as a result of the pandemic. We've seen it. There, there is no denying that the closure of our schools fundamentally impacted our youth. We can argue and debate what the right decision was. The reality of that is, post-COVID, we have seen an increase in student need across the board. Socially, academically, it is there, and it's apparent. The time for the state to say, we are going to invest in our most important resource, which is our children, is now. The community can certainly raise their voices through June about what that final budget may ultimately look like. There are certainly pressure points that can be pursued. So, and I am, I do want to, I am thankful that Senator Gopau got that $4 million in stabilization aid, supplemental stabilization aid for us. But that, they were actually deliberate in saying, this is a one-time adjustment, you know? We're going to run, continue to run the formula, and you're going to, you're going to have to address that next year. And now, remember, when, when we were cut four and a half million more than anticipated, we had about six weeks to figure that out. So the, the comparative, you know, sort of model to that would be, you, you've paid a mortgage for a year, and suddenly, six weeks out, your, your mortgage jumps 20% with no, with no explanation, right? It's a very difficult thing to, to, to plan for. So there is still time until the final state budget is struck. There are unprecedented, there are billions in unspent federal dollars. We're actually one of the worst states in the nation in terms of releasing those funds. So there are certainly things that legislatively we can advocate for, from a community perspective we can advocate for. And on our webpage, under advocating for our students, are clear contacts of, of all of your legislative leaders, and, and I would encourage our community to raise their voice before that final budget is struck in June. Unfortunately, our timelines aren't the state's, so we'll pass the budget that we pass, but that doesn't mean that that won't assist us down the road.
Thank you. Any further questions from the board? Okay, I'll return to my seat, and Mr. Bruno, if you'll move it forward from there.
Thank you. Good job with that, and your staff. May I have a motion to approve the 2023, 2024?
Does anyone want the community to ask a question?
Mr. Bruno. You have the community.
Oh, community, oh, we're going to, community?
No, you just have to, so.
For the community.
Yeah, we have to open it up for the community to just make comments as it relates to the budget. There's another.
Anybody from the community would like to make a comment on our budget?
We will still have our normal public comment period that we always have shortly.
You can come up to the podium. Not hearing anyone, seeing anybody come up. I'm going to have a motion to approve the 2023, 2024 annual school budget.
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Lavin, Ms. Higley.
Any discussion, board? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Ms. McCob?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
We do have some board reports tonight. Mr. Messinger from Marlboro Rep is going to do finance.
Okay, thank you. Back on April 17th, we had our Finance Committee meeting, and on top of a budget overview, we, there were several other issues we discussed. With respect to facility updates, the roof at Marlboro is 100% complete right now. Did a massive amount of work over spring break. The trim still needs to be done on that, but it's basically done. And to refresh everyone's memory, over this summer, the Coltsnet roof, a little bit of work on Freehold Borough's roof and Howell's roof are going to start, and then the parking lots at Marlboro and Freehold Township are going to be paved. And there's actually, if you look at the agenda on I-4, there's a bid opening there that we're voting on for paving. We also discussed HVAC work and state grants that are available for that, that we're investigating, where the state will pay 40% of the cost. You may recall back in January of this year, we approved a submission for these grants, which would be used for a chiller at Freehold Borough, and boilers for every school, with the exception of Freehold Borough. Unfortunately, with these grants, we have to lay out the money before we get reimbursed by the state. And the scope of this HVAC work is roughly $1.3 million. Switching gears to the auditors, it's that time where we're going to put out an RFP by the end of the year, looking to see who wants to bid on doing our audit work for us. With respect to this building, it's well documented about the boiler issue in this building. And if you look at the agenda, we're putting a submission on for the grant for the boiler With respect to buildings and grounds, they are doing prep work for what they're going to be doing over the summer. A lot of, they're looking to do a lot of work before summer starts, particularly with respect to the flooring project, so they're going to do as much prep work as that. And then lastly, summer school this year is moving to Marlboro High due to the roofing work being done at Coltsnet. So that's a big change from prior years. And that is it, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Do we have policy tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Bruno.
Mrs. Capiello?
Thank you.
Or Inglos Town Rep?
The Policy Committee met on April 4th, and on today's agenda, on tonight's agenda, there's two policies that are up for adoption, and four policies that had some minor revisions. The records retention and public attendance at school events policy are both recommended for adoption. The records retention policy outlines the minimal legal and fiscal time periods that public records must be retained by the educational agency. The school district maintains its records in accordance with the applicable records retention schedule. The next one up for adoption is the public attendance at school events policy, which outlines the expectation of members of the community attending athletic or other public events held by schools of the district. The policy details that the board may bar the attendance of any person at a school event whose conduct constitutes a disruption. And then there's several policies on for minor, with just minor revisions. What the Policy Committee has been doing is, in addition to looking at things that are coming up from Strauss Esme that are mandatory for revisions, which we do on a regular basis, we're kind of slowly going back through the policy manual to update each policy is our goal, to get through the whole policy manual, to make sure that everything is, is as it should be. And some of them do have a few minor revisions, which is what these few are. The adoption, adoption of course policy outlines the information related to the district's courses of studies. The use of social networking policies outlines the guidelines for teachers and support staff members on what is appropriate or not appropriate on social networking sites. And the parental responsibilities policy outlines how parents and guardians may support their children in the learning process. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Boyce, are there changes to the agenda you wish to?
There are. Board, I'll just call your attention to two items, two sheets of paper that were on the back table also at, at your place, at this table. The first, with the colored paper, are additions to existing resolutions. So bring that to your attention. That's an amendment. The second are changes to something that already is on the resolution. The first is G-6, which is approval of student-teacher internships and field placements, and the change is to remove school counseling internship for Alex Lindell. The other is for G-11, Resolution G-11, which is approval of a substitute home instructional personnel. And the change is to change the entry of Lisa Palito to Alisa Palito. So those are two changes that were on the back table. I also have an addition, and I also have one where it's filled in. So the resolution, as, the agenda as it went out, had on I-4, which is the parking lot improvement pavings that Mr. Messinger was just referring to. Bids were received late last week, and it takes, takes a few days for our professionals to review those bids and make sure that documents are in order. So we, we have the following resolution that we'll be including on tonight's agenda in that spot on I-4, and I'll read it in. It's, whereas the Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education receives bids, received bids on April 20th, 2023, at 2:00 PM prevailing time for parking lot improvements at Freehold Regional School, Freehold Township High School and Marlboro High School, so two schools. And whereas the bid proposals submitted by MECO Incorporated were reviewed by the district and found to be in compliance with the requirements of the bid documents as the lowest responsive and responsible bids, now therefore be resolved that the Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education accepts the bids received and herewith awards the contract for parking lot improvements at Freehold Township High School and Marlboro High School to MECO in the amount of $1,120,350. I'll just note that those bids did come in within budget, so we did get a good price that, that fits what we have, and the work will be done over this coming summer. So once the approval is made, contracts will be awarded, job meetings will begin, we'll plan it out, and we'll be in touch with the principals to, so that you know what to expect over the summer.
Just one additional note as well, Mr. Bruno, just to mention it publicly, I was going to mention it in my report. You know, the, the board's aware of this, but the, the agenda also includes that change the Memorial Day weekend with those two additional days, Friday, May 26th. I'm sure there'll be a lot of complaints about this sarcasm. And Tuesday, May 30th. You know, I would, I wish every winter was as mild as this winter, because you also, you save money on snow removal and things of that item, that ilk as well. So that's also on this, this agenda.
And one additional item, this is a, an addition to the pre-printed agenda, J-13, and I'll read it in, motion to deny the HIV appeal in connection to report number MNHS-22-23-20. So J-13 in addition to what's on the agenda.
Thank you. We do have some people who would like to speak tonight. Mrs. Dayhill? Am I saying it right? Dayhill. This is Dayhill. Come on up.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
I'm here to talk about the Manalapan High School Lacrosse Program. Alisa Dayhill, 10 Bloomfield Road, Manalapan, New Jersey. So I'm here to talk about the Manalapan High School Lacrosse Program. There, there have been some irregularities that I wanted to bring to your attention. For example, last year, it was announced that 40 boys would be chosen, this is the boys team I'm talking about right now, that 40 boys would be chosen. In the end, 44 were taken. In the end, 44 were taken, and it just, it was just arbitrary, there was no explanation as to why. This year, 48 boys tried out, and 45 were taken, again with no explanation. So, actually, there were only three kids cut, and I don't mean only, it just seems unusual that only three boys were cut. So, typically, when it's a new program like this, and it's a pay-to-play program, so usually when, you know, a program is trying to grow, they take all the kids, you know what I mean, to give them the opportunity to, you know, to grow over time. You know, I discussed this with Mr. Curry, and he pretty much felt the same way, that usually when it's a new program and it's a pay-to-play program, that the kids, usually they take everyone. And I know at Manalapan High School, like, the hockey team takes everyone, the football team takes everyone, so it's kind of unusual. Also, in order for our sons to try out, we had to pay $1,000. And now, my kids have played a lot of sports over the years, and usually a tryout fee is like $25, but we had to lay out $1,000. And also, we had to fundraise. Now, this is prior to the kids trying out. So, that's kind of unusual, too. Now, Manalapan Youth Lacrosse is who we, you know, write our checks to. So, it's not exactly clear what the relationship is between Manalapan High School Lacrosse and Manalapan Youth Lacrosse. So, they raise an awful lot of money. So, if there's 45 kids playing currently, that's $45,000, plus the numerous fundraisers, which we estimated at about $30,000. So, already, just for this year, just the boys is $80,000. Now, Manalapan Youth Lacrosse is, doesn't appear to be in compliant, in compliance. They do not have a board. There's one person that, that manages the money. There's no elections, there's no meetings. So, it's, like I said, it's a little irregular. So, what my questions are, is, does Manalapan High School Lacrosse need to follow the guidelines of, of the board, this board? Do they, what is the relationship between Manalapan Youth Lacrosse and Manalapan High School Lacrosse? And I have one more question, I'm sorry. And, you know, what I was gonna say is, given the budget discussion we had, if pay-to-play is the future of this district, we need to put some policies in place to clarify. So, that's all I have. I mean, is, should I stay here or sit down?
You gonna wait till after?
Yeah, what we're gonna do is, we'll wait for everyone to speak, and then we'll address it. So, if you wanna take a seat.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Our next speaker, Mrs. Fox.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lola Fox. I reside at Five Quid Place in Manalapan. And some of you know me by name, and some of you are just meeting me for the first time, but I want to thank you for your service and all that you bring to the community. Tonight, I want to bring to your attention some concerns I also have with the Manalapan Lacrosse Program. The Manalapan Lacrosse Program has been fundraising and collecting funds for the benefit of the program from students and families through various parents and organizations. According to the district administrators, there aren't any contracts, income statements have not been provided, and there has not been an accounting of how the funds have been used. However, there are two board policies, 9191 and 5830, which require this to occur. I wanted to know who the board will be assigning to correct this and ensure that the program will be in compliance going forward. This seems especially concerning now that the board has minimal amounts of money and will be looking to the public and to parents to support various programs within the district. One of the administrators that I've spoken to has explained to me and to other parents that coaches can discriminate against athletes during the tryout process. That administrator explained that the Americans with Disabilities Act and the Rehabilitation Act's non-discrimination requirements only apply to the ability of a student to try out. She has also provided us with a number, with a copy of a rubric that she said was used for the tryout process. The rubric consisted of a list of categories and specific scores. It did not identify the observable behaviors being evaluated, the tasks required to be performed by the students, or the minimum performance required to achieve each of the scores. These details are required by the Department of Education's guidelines. What is the board going to do to correct these misconceptions regarding discrimination, ensuring that the Department of Education-compliant rubric is used going forward, and establishing a transparent selection process for the athletes in the district?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bruno, do you mind if I?
Mr. Scott, go ahead.
Yeah, sure. Thank you very much. With respect to the questions from Ms. Dayhill, and I apologize if I said that incorrectly, I just want to, there was a question about the contractual relationship. So, a number of years ago, there was a number of interested community members from Manalapan that came to the board and requested that the board start a high school lacrosse team at Manalapan. The board had not had one, the board had also instituted a freeze for a number of years and had not created any new clubs, save for pay-to-play clubs. The discussion was held, and there was an agreement reached with the organization, the Manalapan High School Boys Lacrosse Supporters. That is the organization with which the board has entered into an agreement with. There is no agreement between the board and the Manalapan, let me say it right, Youth Lacrosse Club. There is no contractual relationship between the two. So, I just wanted to clarify that because Ms. Dayhill did ask that question. As for the question from Ms. Fox, the board is not discriminating. The board does adhere to the guidance from the U.S. Department of Education as it relates to extracurricular activities for clubs and sport activities. And in accordance with that guidance, I'll read straight from it, "Schools may require a level of skill or ability to, for participation in competitive programs. Equal opportunity, which is what we have to provide, does not mean that every student with a disability is guaranteed a spot on an athletic team for which other students must try out. There is a set criteria that is used for tryout. It is unfortunate when cuts have to be made. The high school lacrosse program at Manalapan is not the only program that they do make cuts for. And lastly, there is no Department of Education rubric for athletics or lacrosse." So, I'm not sure where that came from. The district has instituted rubrics that are objective and set forth clear criteria for tryouts. It has been implemented for a number of years, and it has been applied evenly and fairly in each instance.
Can I ask a question?
No, it's not back and forth.
Okay. Are we gonna move on?
Yeah.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve items G-1 to G-11?
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion, board?
Liz.
Oh, it was Liz and Mrs. Capiello?
Oh, it was. Diane Ellis.
Yep.
Any discussion, board? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes, except abstaining on G-2, referring to Angelique Gautier.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Ms. McCob?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. We're gonna take H-1 through I-5. It's programmed operations, buildings, transportation, and physical plant.
Moved.
Second.
Mrs. Capiello?
Ms. McCob.
Ms. McCob. Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Ms. McCob?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. We're gonna take J-1 through K-3. It's educational programs and administration.
Moved.
Second.
Mrs. Capiello?
Mrs. McCob.
And the, and the, Ms. McCob. Any discussion? I don't hear any discussion. May I have a roll, may I have a vote?
Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes, on everything, except in K-1, I abstain from Dr. Sampson and Dr. George.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes, but I abstain on K-1 as referring to Dr. Sampson.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Ms. McCob?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. Okay, now we're gonna move along to old business. Any board members have old business they'd like to share with us tonight? And any new business? I know Amanda, you have some new?
Yes. I would just like to congratulate Freehold High School teachers Carol Velosen and Kim Sonnier on their retirement, their upcoming retirement. They were both teachers of mine, and I would just like to wish them luck in their retirement.
I've got Gladys, where are you? Stand up. So, just want to welcome Gladys Figaro, the lead director of transportation. You know, Gladys reluctantly came forward over, after doing the job for a couple months and realizing that it was there all along. So, welcome aboard, Gladys. We're happy to have you, and we know you do great work.
Thank you, Gladys. This board was very concerned about the transportation, and since your cohort retired, and so, I'm not gonna say welcome aboard, because you've been there for a while, I've known you for a while, but congratulations.
Mr. Bruno, I have something. I'd like to congratulate two, our drama departments, because the BACI award nominations came out today, and I think every school in the district was nominated, and there are a lot of representations, so they're doing a great job. And I also should have said old business, I just wanted to say something that unfortunately, one of the staff members of Freehold Township who retired due illness passed away, and Trish Jordan, and she was an amazing teacher who did a, she was the person I went to whoever had to volunteer for anything, and she was a role model for the students, and it's a great loss for the district and the students.
Just, just two quick things, and we'll get to it. Student recognition, I mean, Howe High School absolutely, I think shattered records with the, the awards for Matilda, the recognition, so that, we'll see that next, next meeting. But Gwen Colfield is retiring from the school and community liaison, and, and everybody knows Gwen. But I think the backstory that people don't realize is that, you know, Gwen, we almost lost Gwen, and I thought, really, and I think we, a lot of us thought that we would never see her back at the school again, and she came back and did the whole year, and she just said, "That's not how I wanted to end it here," and has been here for almost 30 years. So, you know, she's, she's a well-earned retirement as well.
Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I hear Ms. McKay. She's not as quite as fast as Mr. Moses, so she's working on it.
Finish your sentence first.
And I saw, you have a second?
We just.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Safe drive home, folks.